We just had a brief executive session, so I'll go into the open session portion of this January 10th meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may join the Zoom meeting via audio or video or both. The information on joining the meeting was included on our agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we aren't able to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website, town-plimpton.mas.us, an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend the meeting can also be found on the town Plimpton website. The recording is not to be considered the official public record of the meeting. That's always the minutes. So being that we've got Amy and Jim with us, we'll take the agenda a little bit out of order and go to appraisal of town-owned land located at Brook Street, because I believe that's why you folks have joined the meeting tonight. So Liz, did you want to take the lead with this one?
Sure. So at your last meeting in which we discussed this matter, you had decided to have me get quotes for an appraisal. I spoke with Mark Turin. He conducted the appraisal at Two Brooks Reserve, and he has priced this out at $1,200. And he's very busy right now, so he said it's about a 12-week heat time.
I felt the amount was fair, and I think we probably should go forward.
All right, I thought the amount was fair as well. Mark, did you have anything that you wanted to add about this?
No, I'm not totally thrilled with the concept of the appraisal, but aside from that, if we're doing one, we've done, the town has used Mark Turin for several projects, and I have complete faith in his work. So if the question is, shall we hire him? If we're hiring, then he's the guy.
Great, thank you, Mark. That's a nice recommendation. Okay, so Liz, you just need us to make a motion to authorize you to enter an agreement with this gentleman to do the appraisal at Old Brook Street? Okay, all right, I'll make the motion that we authorize Liz to enter into agreement with the gentleman. What's his name, Liz?
Mark Turin.
Mark Furin?
Turin.
Okay, to do the appraisal of the town-owned property at Old Brook Street. So we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, so Mark, I won't step on you after this.
So wait, no, so is it me or you afterward?
It's you after.
You, it's you after.
But I'm not sure you wanted to second this.
No, I don't think Mark would have seconded.
Well, I mean, the hiring, yeah, I totally second it, but John, you already got that one.
Okay, all right, so we've got a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay, so we will enter into agreement with this gentleman. And Liz, you said he is about 12 weeks out before he can perform the appraisal.
Correct.
Based on his schedule, okay. All right. Jim or Amy, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
No, not really, just was curious as to where you were on the status of the project, possible project with Habitat. And so was curious also about the appraisal, but it seems that you've discussed it and ready to move forward.
That we are, very good. All right, well, thank you both so much for joining our meeting. And as, once we get the appraisal in, will it then be on the agenda, Liz?
We can figure out next steps and put together a meeting.
Okay, perfect, excellent, thank you very much. Okay, so we will now jump into, back into the agenda in order. So first item is ARPA funds COVID response usage. Did you want to take that one, Liz?
Yes, so we had some discussion in the past about the regional schools and HVAC and considering utilizing a portion of ARPA funds for that particular project. Another thing, though, that I wanted to bring up more immediate, at some point, we may need to tap into a portion of those funds for part of COVID-19 response. We've been having a difficult time getting a hold of test kits, and the state did make available some test kits from different vendors. They're on the state bid list. We haven't had much luck with any of those vendors, but I think if COVID is here to stay, at least for the short term, we need to consider possibly allocating a portion of funds for that purpose. Same thing with the personnel from the fire department to administer the tests, things like that, personal protective equipment. The county cares money, that has concluded, that has wrapped up. So at this point, any COVID-related expenses, we need a funding source for them. I don't think it would be a lot of money from our allotment, but even if we had access, I don't know, to maybe like $5,000 of it that we take out of the ARPA account that's been established and transfer it to the COVID-19 response account, I think that that might be a move that we have to make sooner rather than later. We don't need to do it this evening, but I kind of just wanted to put it on your radar and talk about it at a public meeting and make that known, that we have a real need for testing capability. As it is now, we're not testing residents. We don't have the capability for that, but I think as more tests become available, we're going to want to place an order for some of those and have them on hand. We had even had a plan at one point, it was discussed with the Board of Health, the idea of potentially testing some of the public safety employees, especially the ones who work, say like back-to-back shifts, then maybe they're off for 48 hours and then come back, being able to have that capability. And right now, we just don't have enough tests to do that, but when the tests are available, we do need a means to pay for them. We've been able to kind of Mickey Mouse it up to this point with different funding sources, and the fire department has had to bear the brunt of a lot of that in terms of their operating budget. So I think it's something that, you know, having in mind that we may need to allocate a few thousand dollars at a minimum for COVID response, it's just something I wanted to put on your radar.
I'm in favor of doing it.
Agreed.
Yeah, me too, sounds good, sounds like a good plan.
Excellent, okay.
All right, so next item on the agenda, acceptance of the conservation restriction on a portion of land known as 122 Main Street, Plimpton, parcel ID 7-1-40 totaling 186,806 square feet. And Liz, you provided us with the language that KMP has given the Conservation Commission, that they are, that they're asking for us to accept this restriction?
Correct. The Board of Selectmen needs to vote to accept it and sign off on it, and then the Conservation Commission will, and the landowner, and so forth.
Okay, did you or Mark want to speak on this, or do you just want us to take the vote?
I'm glad to just say, my understanding through the CONCOM is that this is an opportunity to have a buildable lot, and that in doing this, it avoids fragmentation of fragile environment, a fragile vernal pool and the surrounding wetlands. So it's a way to more significantly minimize the messing up of the environment over there.
Okay. Great, all right, so Liz, is this basically a motion to authorize the Conservation Commission to enter into a disagreement?
I would have it, am I muted? No, okay, I would have it be both to authorize them to enter into it, but I would also have it include formal acceptance of it.
Okay, all right, so Mark, did you want to make the motion, or you want me to make the motion on this one?
I'm glad to make the motion that we recommend CONCOM and we accept or approve the conservation restriction on this property.
I'll second the motion. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay.
I'd just add, this is a little bit unusual. I don't remember the Board of Selectmen ever approving a CR before, but this is kind of an unusual situation, and Town Council was much more comfortable with us including our approval on there. But the vast majority of CRs doesn't require, other than land that we, the town own, the vast majority of CRs do not require the Board of Selectmen approval.
All right, very good. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the Projects and Priorities List. So John, do you want to take the lead on this one, or Liz, do you want to take the lead? And we've got, looks like John and John Williams in both here to go through this with us.
I thought maybe, Liz, you had, you have a lot of comments. I think maybe you should take the lead, and we'll just chime in.
Okay.
Maybe I should attempt to share my screen.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you.
And I think we could just skip over the goals.
Okay. All right, let's see, can you see that?
Uh huh.
Okay, so emergency management, some of these I'm just going to gloss over, but if you want to have more discussion, just interrupt. Emergency Management, COVID-19, that's a continued response effort. The chief and I have been in touch with the Board of Health sometimes more than once a week, so that's in progress. The financial team, our internal group of us, we've been meeting monthly. They came and provided an update not all that long ago to the Board of Selectmen. We discussed the senior tax work-off program and some other things that we've been working on, and now we'll be transitioning to budget mode.
Are you taking minutes with that, Liz?
No, I mean, I take my own notes, but it's not a formal committee, so no, I wasn't taking any minutes.
I was going to suggest that you just take it off of the list, and, you know, if you have one, when somebody takes minutes, just pass them on if they're of interest.
Okay.
Well, I don't know how the others feel about that, though.
Five-year cap, and that is very much a work in progress. I think we need to put some thought into developing a new capital plan, and I think we'll be able to do that with the good work from the Town Properties Committee, since so many of the projects are kind of interrelated with them. We also had made a note on air back in August when we went over this item, consider a town meeting article to modify the bylaw and diversify membership to the capital committee. So I don't know if that's something that you want to consider for upcoming meeting, if you want to mull that over a little bit. Maybe I could resend the current language from it that talks about the membership, and it's something you could possibly consider sponsoring an article for at a later time. Now, City Council is the capital committee.
My headset has always been that the Town Properties Committee would morph into being the capital committee. Since the capital committee was put together, we had to twist the arm really of finance committee. They didn't want to do it, and I don't blame them. The way the law is written, it's preferred that it be separate people, a separate committee. So I'm sort of at the headset. I would rather see it wait a year, though. I think we have more work to do, to work together to get everybody at the same level to say, yeah, now it makes sense.
Okay, so I'll keep that on there then, but maybe we'll push this off a little bit as far as the article is concerned. Monthly financial reporting, Lisa just sent out the reports a few days ago from the month of December, so that's ongoing. As far as the survey software options, as it stands right now, the town accountant and the treasurer collector are very happy with our current software now that they've been kind of given more tools and better understand how useful it can be. So I think as far as this goes, we're happy with Lisa's monthly financial reporting, and if they're happy with it from the payroll side, I think we should keep it on the list to consider in the future, depending on how things evolve. We may have a need to bring this item back up, but I think for right now, everybody's kind of content with it. It has even more capabilities than what they have, really time to go through.
I would suggest, in a sense that it come off, I do think the monthly financial reporting, we need a high-level report that goes to the Board of Selectmen that just gives us an idea of where everybody is. It may be no more than this department is at blank percentage, but it's something I, at one of your meetings, I'd like to attend, and maybe we go through and work it. We could bring it back to the board here and see if there's a feeling that it works.
Are we receiving this monthly financial report now?
I don't know, Bree and I get it for all of our stuff. If you want to be added to it, though, you can. It's not ideal, they just add your email.
Okay, please.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. Affordable housing opportunities, development of an action plan based on our housing production plan, I definitely think that should stay on there, but I believe our housing production plan is due for an update soon. That was one of the things that Old Colony Planning Council mentioned to me when I attended a meeting with those folks back before the holidays, so I can reach out to them and find out what's entailed with that, and if there's any technical assistance available to help us get that underway. I just want to make sure we don't miss a deadline, and then the plan is, you know, not in compliance and not up to date. Identification of town-owned land that could be utilized, I had struck through this because we did identify those parcels of land, and we've been kind of pursuing those via the public-private partnerships, and now we're conducting the appraisal at Old Brook Street. So I think that the public-private partnership should stay on there, and we can move forward with that.
But Liz, so when we get the appraisal and we sort whatever we're doing with Old Brook Street, we may need to go back and reassess what we have for land also based on any additional feedback, because I thought the way we left it, unless I missed something in the process here, that they were going to go back and relook at some of the other parcels, because we started to pull Old Brook Street off the table. That Habitat was going to go back, and I don't think we ever reconnected on that, so...
No, I think that the most interest was with Old Brook Street. The other drawbacks for a variety of reasons.
Well, but they seem to have some, I mean, I think we're going to, I think we're actually going to need to relook at it. If Brook Street is off and they still have reservations with the other parcels we identified, I think we're going to need to go back and take a look.
I agree.
Yeah, I support that, too.
You know, because I think we're going to have to think about Center Street. I think we need to, we're going to have to, we're going to have to take, if that's gone, which was sort of the easy one, and what else we identified for them, they're not really interested in, then either we have to find other land, or we have to put other things back into the process. But I think we need to sort up that, and then hopefully, we can also, to the extent that that ends up being sold, and those funds should hopefully be put and dedicated towards this process. You know, that's, you know, near market for that, and then it should have some benefit, right?
No, I agree with that.
Yep.
So Highway Department, Implement pavement management plan, that's in progress. They're kind of going along in order, and they utilize that for...
Do, when we say that, do we have an end goal on that? I mean, my headset has always been that it would be up on the web.
I can ask Rob if he can put it up on the web.
Well, I think we ought to review what it is first.
Yeah, we had it a while ago.
I don't remember seeing it.
But it may have been a few years ago, and I don't know what he's done, like as far as updating it, like as stuff gets done. So why don't we put that more on a short-term list, and maybe the next time that Rob, that we have him in to give an update, he can update us on that, and we can look at it. Intersection maintenance, Main Street and Ring Road, and Winnetou Tuxit and Prospect. I made a note here, Mark had sent a good photo of those speed signs, and it seems like our pavement painting is not having the desired effect. So maybe we need to consider an article at town meeting to fund some of this signage. I know that they're not cheap. I believe one was donated on 106 that we have.
I think it was a grant, wasn't it?
No.
I think a business owner donated.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, it was Kerry Auto.
I think the former police chief might have mentioned $4,000 each, something like that, but the road painting obviously isn't doing the job, and...
No, I agree with you, Mark. I think we should do this. I think I got caught in the supermarket, I said hello to Howard Randall and spent the afternoon. The other thing, though, that Howard brought up is that one of the things that's happening, because the road is now paved, Prospect Street, that you really start to pick up speed back where the cranberry bog is, you know, at the Middleborough Plimpton Town Line, and I'm wondering whether we should have one back there that helps, sort of gives a heads-up, hey, here's where we think it is, even if we had to buy a fifth one.
I'm okay with it, and would be fine with me. Quick little side story, I was walking on a Cape Cod town where there are a bunch of these, and if you walk toward the sign, it flashes three or four miles per hour, which is exactly my pace, 18-minute miles. So it works, even if you're walking.
I think, I think, though, the, I mean, the one that I find incredibly annoying are the ones they put on Route 80 that flash at you even if you're doing under the speed limit.
Yeah, and that, that is...
That's just a personal annoyance. It's like, fine, tell me what speed I'm going, but don't yell at me if I'm not, if I'm doing the right thing. And I see some in Canover has somewhere, it's one color light until you're over, and then it flashes, or something like that.
Maybe that's a programming thing, and I, you know, before we do this, I'd want to make sure that we're not flashing into someone's living room incessantly, but I think probably if we're careful, we can minimize any impact.
Liz, before you leave, that Corderoy Road, I don't think, Rob, from my headset, we need Rob to come in and just say, where is this in his thinking?
Hey, Bree, I was just about to say, I think for some of these, like, so say even the article for the, for the speed boxes, I think we need him to come in. He can get us pricing so that we know what to do for that article, but some of this, I think, depending on the office or the board or committee, some of it's better left, I think, for individual updates from a particular department or board or committee, so that we don't get too far, like off our agenda, because some of it, I think, warrants further discussion. So I'll make the note of that, and he can be prepared for the next time that we have him in to kind of update us on these and next. The heavy truck traffic discussion, I sent around a letter that we received from Mass DOT, we have been denied, and they were looking for clarification, and I have it here. They want us to clarify if it's 24-hour exclusion, which I assume that it was, or a nighttime exclusion, but beyond that, they don't seem to appreciate the idea of our ultimate route involving the town of Halifax. So they are requiring us to obtain written permission from Halifax before they'll even review the request again. So I guess my question for you is, would you like me to contact Halifax and pursue that, or do you want to put this on the shelf for a while? You know, we had included all the backup documentation and everything from Old Colony Planning Council. We had traffic counts and all of that information. I was a little surprised that we would need written permission from another town, given that it's a state-numbered route. They specifically had an issue with Palmer Road, so I found that a little odd, but...
I think you're going to have a problem with Halifax right now. First of all, they have an interim town administrator, and second of all, you know, I don't know who you talk to, unless Christine, you talked to Gordon, and I'm not sure they'd want to even entertain that right now, but, you know, it might be better just to let it lie for maybe six months and then come back and revisit it.
The other thing to consider is that, you know, when we took the grant from the state and they put up guardrails all over the town, or not all over the town, on certain routes, and then raised the speed limits on certain routes, including Main Street there, clearly someone from the state perspective has viewed that as a viable route to, to move traffic off of the numbered routes. So my guess is, is we're running into something there, too, if they've come back so strongly against what seemed to be a pretty reasonable question, that you just say, stick to the numbered routes.
Yeah, this is really disappointing. I thought we had this all pinned down, as I understood it from Old Colony. I understand what you're saying, John. I think it may be to be okay to wait six months and let things settle down a little in Halifax politics, but I don't want to give up on this. If we're already ending up with much less heavy truck exclusion than we wanted, but getting these trucks off Main Street just, just totally makes sense with the character and the quality of town we want to have.
I'm with you, Mark. I think that's definitely where we want to end up. I'm just trying to figure out how we get there.
Yeah, I agree. I'm glad to wait six months, but let's leave it on the parking lot.
Maybe it's three months, yeah, maybe it's spring.
Okay, yeah, yeah, let's keep going. And I don't know whether, if we went for some type of partial restriction in the interim, if, you know, that would do us any good. I don't know, I don't know if it was all or nothing.
I don't think I've ever seen a big truck on those roads in the night.
Well, that's when we would allow them.
I should have known better.
Yes, it's not a 24-hour restriction, just daytime hours.
Daytime restriction.
Just a daytime restriction, exactly, all right. All right, so we'll keep that one on the, on our radar, no pun intended.
Fire Department street signs, I've just put that on hold with COVID. I don't want to bother the fire chief with that.
Okay. Natural and recreational resources, open space and CONCOM have been doing great work with the MVP Action Grants. They're very happy with, they were doing the Winnetou Tuxit project, and now I believe that they just got an approval for a phase... And now I believe that they just got an approval for a phase two, um, of that. So that's in progress. Um, town on land disposition process. Um, we've started doing that every year. Like if you recall last year, we followed the process. Um, so I guess we just keep this on there. I mean, not something ongoing, but maybe it's good to have on there. Um, Water Resources Working Group. Mark, do you want to take that one?
Um, I, I, I think quiescent would be a word that would go along with that group right now. That, that is to say, I, I'm not aware of much of anything happening right now. It's sort of tied in with open space and with the MVP grant.
Okay.
I learned a new word. That's good.
Unless I made it up.
Soul Homestead and the lease, um, this is still in progress. Everyone on all sides of the transaction seemed to be happy. But I have yet to receive a definitive answer on the legislation. Um, all of my inquiries are responded to, that it's still in third reading.
Is it in the House or in the Senate?
It's at the Senate now.
Maybe we can ask Brady to at least, you know, or his, his chief.
It was put forth, I believe, by the Senator from Middleborough. Um, and I had somebody from Kathy Lanatra's office was looking into it for us as well. Um, so we haven't heard anything negative. But the last time, um, that it was proposed, it, it died basically. It never, um, made it to fruition. So I'm hopeful this time we can get it across the finish line.
Well, we, you know, the only thought is, well, this is a no brainer. It should happen. I don't know why, I don't know why there's any resistance, but I would like to see us, uh, at least push Brady a little before we lose him. Because.
Brady or, um, Kathy Lanatra's, uh, uh, executive assistant kind of been helpful along the way.
Chris.
Yeah, and I, I, he seems like the guy that's most likely to follow up. But I think Liz, the last time we were in contact with him was maybe over the holidays. But now that legislature's back in session, I wonder if we couldn't bug him one more time.
I'll send him something else and I'll include more people on it. Um, in defense, they've been working on the ARPA regulations and everything else. A lot of COVID kind of response things. So, um, I'll, I'll check into that again. Um, solar agreements, this is with Board of Assessors. Um, that's an ongoing effort there. Um, Plimpton Senior Citizens Issues.
I'm not sure what we meant there.
I'm not sure either. Um, but as far as, um, GATRA is concerned, um, it's been a bit stagnant. They had some turnover at GATRA. Um, so we're waiting for things to kind of stabilize. Um, I think somebody may have, um, somebody that Colleen was in touch with had, um, signaled that they'll be ready to kind of get to us shortly as far as, um, looking at level of service, um, potential routes, scheduling, that kind of thing.
I know Colleen's, uh, she's attending the meetings, the board meetings that they have with the community. So it is slow and they have a problem because I guess the, uh, the director has left. So hopefully that'll work forward. There's a lot of interest from the senior side, obviously.
Right. And GATRA has been really great to work with, like all the communications with them have been very positive. So, um, we keep that on there. Um, Technology Master Plan and Bolster Website. Um, we have the master plan. That's a work in progress. We're having that assessment done. Um, I should know something, some results from that within the next two weeks or so. And then the idea would be that they'll kind of map out for us what we might need in the way of either warrant articles or budgeting for, for future items. Um.
I do, I would like to see us, uh, see if we can, uh, bring Steve, um, Pello into the conversation. You know, I'd like to have somebody who's got some technology expertise because and you and I certainly can't make all those decisions.
Right.
Somebody, we need somebody.
See, when, when we get the assessment from them and sit down and go over it with them, then maybe we want to meet with somebody like Steve.
Yeah. John, if you have any suggestions, that would be great too.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to see what the assessment says and see, see what, which, see which ways we can move this forward because, you know, we're not communicating the way we could, I think, with, with, uh, with the community or leveraging technology quite as, as much as we could. And I think it's going to be really important for future budgeting too.
Yeah, I agree.
Which way we go and whether we continue to run infrastructure within the building or start outsourcing that.
Um, work on capability for hybrid meeting approach, um, once COVID is behind us.
Now, is, um, Rich, uh, coming in next meeting?
Um, Rich is glad to come in whenever we want him.
I thought we had agreed, uh, the 20th or whatever, what the next meeting was, something like that, Liz.
Um, I don't recall, but if you want him to come in, I'm sure he'll be more than willing. I can send him something.
Well, either we talk to him offline or.
He thought he was all set. We would need the dedicated IP address. And then I thought we had kind of put a pin in it just with the COVID surge and everything with the idea that in the spring, um, we would be up and running with the technology piece. The assessment would be done. We'd get the dedicated IP address. Um, but if you want him to come in sooner, like the next meeting, I, I can certainly reach out to him.
I think we, well, I don't know, maybe you and I and him could just chat or if we want to do it at a board of selectmen. Either way, I don't care. But I do want to feel like we've got exactly what the steps are that's going to make this happen. And I'd like to know more about what Cav is doing. Are they already there? If they're already there, that, that alleviates a lot of the issues that I have.
Okay. So maybe we do need another conversation with him.
Yeah, I mean, he has assured me that we do have the technology other than the de- dedicated IP line. But I, you know, if it, if it makes, um, everyone more comfortable to, um, just hear that directly from him, maybe that way, uh, having him in for a few minutes, having the discussion. And then we can la everyone's concerns and, um, and just move forward.
Yeah. And this IP address is not a big deal. I mean, it's.
No, that's simple. I, I spoke with Michael about that. He said, that's not a big deal. Um, we have the Plimpton Hurst that's still on there.
I mean, I don't know where we put it. I don't think where it is is a good thing.
My garage isn't big enough.
Yeah. I mean, this is, you know, it's, I mean, it, it, it's on the list, but there's a lot of things in front of it. And the problem is, is by the time we get to it, how much damage is going to be done to it, sitting in, in Center Street, which is not a, you know, not a great spot for it.
Is it, it, does it get wet there, John? I mean, I understand the cold weather and the hot weather.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be wet by the, by the fact of the type of building it is, you know, it's just damp, right? So it's gonna be.
But there's no rain coming on it, right?
I don't believe so, but there's little critters. I know that, uh, I know that various fire department personnel have scared out mice and, and so on and so forth. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's being, it's being taken advantage of by our little four-legged rodents, uh, but that's not an ideal thing. Um, I just don't know where else we move it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. I wonder if we could just put out a, a, a help type thing on the website and, you know, we've got this and we need a, a storage place, uh, probably for another year.
Couple of years, probably.
Couple of years, yeah.
Um, you know, it, I mean, ultimately this goes back to, uh, discussions that we've had about a storage building.
Right.
Um, but that's just, it's just farther down the, down the list.
I'm wondering if there's a private entity that wouldn't mind donating some space for it.
You know, it, it was kept in the, uh, funeral parlor, you know, of Sheppard. Uh, whatever they call it now. Um, I wonder if we could go to Cisco. Or Hubble.
I mean, it's just, we need someplace to put it where it's clean and dry for a few years till we can get some stuff sorted out, even short term, right? I mean, ideally it should be somewhere that we can trot it out for a parade and whatever else.
Yep.
Have people see it and understand it. Um, but.
Let me take a shot at, uh, contacting, uh, Cisco and Hubble.
Yeah.
All I can do is say no.
This is brief. How big is this?
Well, I guess it's like a small van if I'm.
Yeah, we should probably go and get some measurements on it. Since like, I don't think I could accurately say it. I don't think I've actually, I have not actually seen it in person. So, um, let's get some measurements on it and, uh.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to go down with you, John. We'll take a look at it.
Yeah. Does the, do I assume the chief has the key to the building?
Well, Rob has it.
So maybe Rob could meet us over there and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's not a great, not a great building for a modern vehicle as it is, let alone an old wooden one.
Okay, so we'll pursue that. I'll let Rob know to get. Um, Fire Department, look at town meeting article to possibly consider work, um, on a new station.
Yeah, I mean, this.
Relocation of the fields.
We can't get anywhere until we do this piece, uh, with a decision either way. Because I, this is the, this is what allows us to be able to validate all of our assumptions. Uh, and also to understand what the possible bill would be. Um, thus we, you know, so, so this, this, and I, I think it's important for people to understand that this is not saying we're going to build the station. At some point we are going to have to, like this is, our existing station will not last. Um, we're going to have to, but whether we do it in a year or whether we do it in three years or five years, that's what we have to understand. And we can't figure out how it fits into the financial plan without doing this type of study. And understand what our costs would be. Um, and then we can draw a line in the sand and then we can sort of extrapolate what the cost will be down the road too. But anything that we're talking about at this point is still, you know, it, it's best guess. And we, we shouldn't be guessing with something of this magnitude. So we, we will be, I think we will be putting that forward for, for town meeting.
Okay. And we have, um, library lighting and plumbing fixture issues and library roots.
And so there's, so we actually met with Mike, uh, the last town properties committee last week. Uh, and he brought a very extensive, uh, list, uh, broken down by high, medium and low. Um, which does suggest that the library has been neglected for a long time. Um, and they've been making do. Um, but, uh, so there's, there's a fair amount of things. I think some of the stuff we can probably deal with offline, but certainly we need to fix the lighting. And this is in the, the old section of the library. You really can't see anything and it's probably useful to be able to see the books you're looking at. Um, and so we, we're going to deal with that. Um, there's some other issues that are probably, you know, short term that we need to do for basic maintenance. We have some door issues with leaking and things like that. Um, we did do the roof survey. So we, we have a, uh, we have sort of a line in the sand and this sort of goes to the same thing with the fire department. Um, understanding what that is, we know how much that would cost to do. We know that that cost will change, but we now have a line in the sand on that. Um, we have to deal with the townhouse roof first. But by Mike coming in and, and giving us all this detail, we can start to whittle away that list. And the thing that kind of occurred to me as we were talking about this the other day is, when is the last time you remember us doing anything for the library at town meeting? Other than the CPA article to deal with the, uh, drainage. I can't remember the last time we've done that, which suggests that we need to pay some attention to the building and make sure that we can keep it up to stuff. But I think there's going to be a lot of different levers to pull, which is great. And we can really get that one back on track. Not, not counting the roof, because that's a pretty big project, but we can get that one back on track. Uh, that building back on track, I think it's pretty short order. So, um, Liz, when you and I get together, we're going to talk through some of that. And then we'll, we will likely have an article for the library, um, that will include the lighting and perhaps some other items. If we decide to vault bucket that in, it's not going to be a huge article, but, um, there are some items that I think we need to facilitate there. And then some things that we'll look, put into the plan for the next couple of years to get sorted. And then the, the townhouse roof, uh, Liz and I have actually been working with our architect to sort of really time this so that we can, um, go out to bid for, for this, this, again, the, the roof is divided into three sections. The front is number one. The middle section is number two and the back is number three. And so this is focusing on two and three. Uh, but time this to be able to get the bids back so that we can go to town meeting with an actual price tag of additional funds that we need to be able to really get this all sorted for the second and third parts of the roof. Um, it doesn't fix all of the townhouse because we still have the front piece that's out of scope right now. Uh, but we'll have to, we'll, we'll deal with that as we, as we go.
Okay. And then we have, um, Sistern Town Green. We were seeking grant funding for that. Um.
I think it got denied.
Like a ton out there for that specific purpose. Um, a lot of maybes, but nothing concrete yet. Um, townhouse and fire station, septic and plumbing issues. Um, we had that emergency situation last week that, um, Pat Moran from the Board of Health was taking the lead on for us. Um, I hope that that resolves for the long term, at least the issue with the piping that goes from the fire station. Um, kind of through the parking lot, it goes at the back of the townhouse, um, like just past our building. So that should hopefully rectify, um, that current issue. But I think long term, we need to look at like the overall big picture, um, for all these different plumbing issues. Um, old townhouse, we concluded the surf pro remediation. Um, we did have samples taken of the floor tiles beneath the carpet in the room that was, um, remediated. And, um, it does appear that we have to follow, um, asbestos abatement protocols. So I'm working on getting pricing for that, um, right now. We should have a price maybe by next week. Um, what we'd be looking at to remediate that. Um, and then I think long term, keeping this on the list is good. Because at some point we need to look at overall maintenance of that building and making sure that it's being utilized with enough regularity. That if there are problems there, we're aware of them and that it's not just sitting dormant for months on end.
So just a couple of quick comments on this. I was over there this weekend, um, and with the snow on the roof, it, it helped to suggest some spots where we have the moisture coming in. Um, I called Tom and Tom stopped over as well. Um, so I got to catch up with him and see if he is in agreement with, with the spots where we think there may be some issues with the flashing and so on. Because we have to sort out the water before we put everything back in there. Um, and so, you know, I think it's the right thing to go about getting that carpet out of there and getting it all clean and tidy. Um, we'll then of course need to put everything back. And there's a few other little carpentry items that we need and some touch up on the, and some painting that will need to be done, small amount of painting. Uh, because there was moisture in there. We have some peeling paint on the outside. And of course, whatever we do inside will need to be, need to be painted as well. So we will, we will look at that to bring something to town meeting to, to get that sort of put back together. And then I think the other thing that we now need to, to take a look at is, um, some form of dehumidification for the first floor of the building. Uh, so that we don't have this issue, uh, again. Um, it's not only that, that you had moisture in this back room that caused the mold to begin with. The overall dampness, I think in the downstairs of the building didn't help with the mold growth that came out of that room. So we'll, we'll need to look at, 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 at that as well. But that's, that's sort of on our agenda to, to get that sorted and get the building sort of. that came out of that room. So we'll, we'll need to look at, at, at that as well. But that's, that's sort of on our agenda to, to get that sorted and get the building sort of back squarely into, into good shape and back into a usable, usable fashion. And we also have to look at the tiles upstairs. They're coming up in a number of spots and isn't really safe for you. So we'll, we'll look at that too. So it's always a long list of town properties.
So we have volunteer recognition and outreach. I think that that's always ongoing. We've done a good job though of filling some of those board and committee seats. There's a few more with vacancies. Maybe I can send that out again and we can see if there's anyone interested.
Before we, on the Old Town House, I was muted. I was talking to myself. We need to do the locks so that we know who's in there. And we need to take a look at those tiles on the upstairs if we're going to have people going back again.
Yeah. Did, did we, did we sort out internet for that building?
Not a week. We were waiting for an issue with the Comcast agreement for some of the buildings. So once I verify with Bree that that's all been canceled, then we will
God damn it.
Yeah, because I, I did look it up and so we can, once we have internet, we can, there's a couple of different things we can do with, with a, you know, with a smart lock set and also being able to have a, it's a type of device that you put in the building that will communicate, create a communication between the lock and the internet so that you can have a record of who's coming and going into the building. And also you can take access away or change the codes and be able to do that. And then I think you could also, you can also do more with that too about, you know, if you ended up putting, doing some other smart things like with smart switches and stuff where you could conceivably check and see if lights are on and so on and so forth. So there's, there's a fair amount that we can do there and it's pretty small money, but we, everything starts with having the internet access to begin with.
Okay, we can prioritize that then, getting that up and running.
So I have a question. Right now, there's no Comcast is done with everybody. I don't have any Comcast services.
Okay, good. So if you want to contact them and get a basic contract just for internet and whatever the wifi gizmo is that we need so that there's wifi at the Old Town House.
So the transfer station doesn't have Comcast right now?
That building comes to me. So if they do, John, it's something.
That's something that they must be paying for if they do.
They're not paying for it.
For the town campus.
Well, we ought to just check because that was part of the Comcast agreement that it was free to the transfer station. So if we've eliminated the Comcast contract, we ought to just figure out what we're going to do there, if anything.
Okay, I think John Sherstone was looking into what he, what he found from before they were canceling things as well. I'll check with him. Because they did read through that Comcast contact.
Okay.
I'll find that out from him tomorrow.
Okay. And Bree, just so you're aware for, for doing that, our goal is to prioritize at the Old Town House. We want wifi in that building. We don't need phones or anything like that, just wifi.
Yeah. So basically it would be, it would be an internet, internet connection and their, their, their cable modem should have a wifi capability that they would install.
Yes.
I'll find out what the installation will be.
Great. Some town center to Old Town House. I have a call into the vendor who did our flag polls at the Town Green and on 106. Flag and decoration policy. Do you want to keep that on for now?
Is that yours, Mark?
I don't think so.
No, I think it's Christine.
Christine's muted.
Yeah, this, yeah, this one is mine and I would like to keep it on, but I think that we're heading in the right direction where we're going to have a consistent look anyway with things that we've talked about. So I think it'll probably take care of itself where, you know, the, the town will, things will be decorated in a similar manner on the all the properties.
Internships. I know that the police have had quite a few interns that they've had good luck with. And the Fire Department and Board of Health might be looking into like, like health nurse internship type position from somebody who's going to school for that. So that's kind of a work in progress, but that was an idea that was floated just recently. Cemetery cleanup events. I think that was yours, John.
I think as far as the scouts that's gone by the board because our insurance doesn't allow for anybody under 18 to be, to be covered. As far as the cemetery cleanup for North Plimpton, the lady who owns it, the land had signed, was, signed the agreement. And then we send her out a more formal agreement so that we could vote it at the Board of Selectment. And she found out from her accountant apparently that her income is going to go up because of this. Which I wrote back and said, I'm at a quandary why that would be true since we're only having volunteers that would do the cleanup. It's even though the town is looking to say that they'll do the maintenance, it's, we're not paying anything. So she was going to look into it and get back to us, but she, she had actually signed the, the agreement that was on the, you know, that I sent by email, but we needed a more formal agreement on paper that we could then vote and sign and send back to her. So it's kind of in process.
Okay. And then educational opportunities for volunteers.
I think this was you again, Christine, wasn't it? No?
I think we put on there a long time ago, back when like Elise Lyons was helping with grants for the Fire Department and some stuff like that.
I think I remember a conversation where we said, maybe because people are on these committees that they can get free, you know, they can go to some of these seminars, et cetera, that would be free to them or if it was a nominal amount through the town.
Okay, so maybe we should keep that since we have a lot of volunteers.
There's probably online training seminars too. I think that there's quite a few of those.
Yeah.
Okay. And then things that we're following for the long term, we have the Carver Urban Renewal Project. We have the Rocky Harvest Settlement Compliance. Future exploration of shared services and opportunities. And then obviously different grants that may be available to us. And those are all things that we're following on kind of an ongoing basis.
Does it make sense to add this MBTA Communities thing to this list?
Yeah, I think we should. Because I honestly, I don't see how that's going to translate to a town our size.
Fifteen units per acre?
Yeah.
I don't think there's 15 units on the entire Cranberry Knoll property.
No, we can't. I mean, they can't take a one size fits all approach to this. It just doesn't work for.
I'll be attending that webinar this week too. So I just, I didn't, I don't understand. I don't, I don't know.
I'll be on it too. And then I think we have kind of dueling Zooms going on. We did receive a cybersecurity grant through the state. So I've sent that information to Bridgette and I'm going to see if she can log into that Zoom call, which is at the exact same time as the state sponsored call. So I can do one and Bree can listen in on the other.
I'll also try and to attend the MBTA thing.
Okay. And I think, I think Representative Lenatra is planning to attend. She's been helpful as far as kind of monitoring this for us. So it looks like we'll have some good representation on the call.
Well, I gotta drop, but thanks for, thanks for letting me offer comment tonight. So.
Thanks for attending, John.
Absolutely. Have a good evening.
You too.
Good, John.
All right. So we are working down the agenda. Let me close some things up here. All right. So opening of annual and special town meeting warrants for articles. So I asked Liz to put this on the agenda so that we were able to, we've got a lot going on to get the warrant open for both the annual and the special so that we can begin to take submissions and, and get organized. So John or Mark, if you don't have any issues with this, I'll make a motion to open the warrant.
I'm glad to second that motion.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we open the annual and special town meeting warrants for articles for the town meeting in May.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, Bridgette, warrants paid. Do you have those?
Oops, sorry, I was muted. Twenty-two thousand, twenty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. That included, I'm sorry, it had a KP, Law invoice in there. Actually, two of them. Verizon Local Computer WB Mason, lots of ever source once again. And just the normal utilities.
Great. All right. Thanks, Bree, very much.
Thank you.
All, all right, Liz, Town Administrator's Updates Including COVID-19.
So I have here, back from when former Chief Clancy was helping us with the technology situation and kind of bringing different vendors on board. One of them, which is MD Communications, they're the folks that would basically, like we've, we had to call them a lot kind of at the start of the new phones and everything to get everything programmed properly. They're the people who we would call if we were having an issue with the phones or if we needed something reprogrammed or someone needed a new phone line. Things like that. And they have provided to us, Matt had approved it prior. But then when he left, they wanted us to approve basically an updated agreement with them. So I have it here for the standard plan, which would include labor for them to send people out, which they do from time to time. Especially over at the Fire Department with the variety of phone lines that they have and direct lines to the regional dispatch and all of that. It would cover labor and any parts. And I told him we would want to do it on a fiscal year basis. I think when Matt originally signed them up, it was more like on a calendar year, which doesn't really work well for our purposes. So it appears if we wanted to sign up for 18 months, which would essentially cover this January through June 30th of 23, it would be like 315013, so $3,150.13. Or they could bill us monthly for that. I think it's, it makes sense. They've been involved all along. Like I said, Matt had already approved an agreement with them. It was more or less me being kind of nitpicky and like, oh, well, he's no longer here and we want updated dates on the agreement and make it run for a fiscal year. So where he already approved it and everyone's been involved kind of in the technology plan, we had a town meeting article for, to cover the cost of some of this. I'm comfortable signing off on it, but I did want to bring it forward in case you had any specific concerns. Another option that we could do is a six month option. But that doesn't make good financial sense in my mind. That's $2,115.93. So it's a lot more if we want the condensed version. These people have been very responsive. They've been fine to deal with. I would recommend that we just do the 18 month agreement, which is kind of in line with what Matt already approved them for. But like I said, I wanted to mention it. We would fund this for the remainder of this fiscal out of our computer utility budget line. And then obviously I would have to take that into account for, for next fiscal year's budget and make sure that it's in there as a standalone item. So if you don't have any issue with that, I'll plan to move forward. I just run it by you. Also, technology wise, are the safety buttons for the offices at the townhouse that are connected to regional dispatch? They've been in place since Pat Dillon was the Police Chief. So for a long time, we need to upgrade the system. It's no longer compatible with the voiceover IP phone lines and everything that we have. So ADT provides the service. And we have an agreement that they sent over. The equipment and installation cost is $3,190. That's a one-time charge. And then it's $65 a month for the monitoring fee. We do have an article still on the books for townhouse alarm work. I don't know if back at that time, it was envisioned that this would be part of that, but we can afford it. Right now, our current system is not functioning optimally. So we do need to more just a question of when. So I, again, I'm uncomfortable moving forward with this where we have the funds in a dedicated article for it. But where it's been a while since we've talked about anything to do with the technology or some of the upgrades that are needed. I wanted to bring it forward to the board. So does anyone have any issue with that? Some of the other town buildings do need some different upgrades made in the way of fire and security alarms. Bree has done a lot of work with the different vendors to get pricing. But I think for some of that, for those upgrades, I think we need to wait until town meeting and get an article on the warrant and understand what the full cost is and make sure that whatever building it is that those department heads have kind of programmed that into their budgeting. So I wouldn't recommend moving forward with some of those right now, but I think this, to make sure that the, that those buttons are functioning like they need to, to do that now. If that makes sense. And then otherwise, it's been busy. We've been in budget mode, really. The budgets are starting to come in. And next week, Finance Committee and myself begin our meetings. So everything's off and running and I have a list already going of potential warrant articles. So now that you've opened the warrants, I will send something out to everyone tomorrow that just lets them know that they are officially opened and that we're, we're receiving them. So that concludes my update. I do not have anything specific in correspondence other than the letter from Mass DOT denying the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. But we already discussed that during the projects and priorities item.
All right. Thank you, Liz, very much. All right. So onto minutes from 12/20/2021. Mark and John, did you get a chance to read the minutes?
I had no issues.
I had no issues.
I, I did. My only issue was on the. The notation about area fifty-eight. I think the first part of that sentence, which reads before any provider change would be made. The BOS would invite in Rich and I think we should delete that first portion and then. The sentence would simply read, the Board of Selectmen will invite Rich Goulard in to a future meeting.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Bree, did you get that or do you want Mark to send you an email?
You can email me.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a minute, a motion to accept the minutes from twelve twenty, twenty-one. As amended by Mark tonight. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, John. Roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. Dates to remember, our next meeting is one twenty-four and then the following meeting in February will be February fourteenth. Valentine's Day. I can't imagine anyone else I'd rather spend Valentine's Day with. All right, rants and raves. Who'd like to go first?
I'm glad to go first. My rave is for the opening of the annual and special town meeting. Town meeting is the legislative branch of town government instead of meeting throughout the year. It meets one night or. Occasionally two nights, but essentially out of that meeting, we get our, we, the Board of Selectmen, which is the executive branch of government. Get our marching orders for the year.
Very good. And we're starting to process.
Onward we go.
Onward we go. John, do you have one or do you want me to go next?
Go ahead.
All right. Mine is, would be Art Warren for taking the lead with the mess we had with, at the fire station with the septic system. So thank you, Art, for working to get that squared away with Norman as quickly as possible. And then my second rave is just, it's how beautiful it is in wintertime. Here with snow on the ground and the bogs and just what a great part of the country we live in and how beautiful it is.
I'd like to be on a tropical island.
I like the snow and I like the cold.
Okay. I guess my rave would be for. Mike Sloss in the library, as we've continued to work with him. You see the programs that are coming out almost daily on the children's side of the equation. But it's also the things he's doing with the adult, the first Saturday. Helping with the genealogy and the work he's done. With the town properties committee. It was really nice to see him come in with a three-page list. That was all broken down by priorities, immediate, medium term, long term. And it gave us a good look at the library that quite frankly, we had maybe not thought enough about. So. Kudos to him.
Very good. All right. So it sounds like that's all we've got tonight. So I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Good night, everyone. We'll see you in two weeks. All right. Take care. Stay warm.
Bye-bye.